Good afternoon, everybody. Appreciate you being here today. It is 3:00 P.M. The meeting is now called to order. This is the City Council of Sims Work Session. Roll call, please.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Watts.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Webb.
Yeah.
Councilmember Platt.
Here.
Councilmember Lawson.
Here. Very good, thank you. Everyone's present, very good. First item up is item number three, approval of the minutes from the previous work session council meeting of September 19th, 2017. You have those in your packet. If you take a minute to review those, make sure they are correct. We may make any changes or adjustments or amendments. Take your time with that. This is the work session.
Will be approved?
Yes, second. All in favor? Any opposed? Very good. The minutes from the previous work session council meeting are is approved. Okay, presentations. First presentation is corporal party of the MSO with our prime reporter. Greetings.
Greetings.
It's been a busy period.
Yes, sir. I think that my next report's going to even be better.
All right.
But today I'll be presenting Mobile County Sheriff's Office Sims Unit Report covering August 16th, 2017, September 15th, 2017. I believe all the members of the council should have a spreadsheet that shows you all the calls for service. Our total calls for service from the period we're talking about here, we have 1,023. We're down 36 calls from the same time last year, which we've had 1,059. Our primary calls for service, 911 hangups, we had 39. We're down 54 from last year. Our thefts, we had 35. We're up 16 from last year. Stolen vehicles, we had 14. We're up 8. Residential burglaries, we had 17. We're up 1. Commercial burglaries, we had 0. We're down 2. Vehicle burglaries, we had 13. We also had 13 last year. Residential alarms, we had 83. We're up 16 from last year. Commercial alarm, we had 47. We're up 18. Our calls on the rise, thefts, stolen vehicles, residential burglaries, residential alarms, and commercial alarms. Calls on decline, our total calls for service, 911 hangups, and commercial burglaries. Our Sims DUI grant was conducted on September 1st, 2017, from 1,700 to 0,300 hours. Deputies took a call in enforcement actions. They issued 13 citations, issued 36 warning citations, had an misdemeanor warning asked for traffic offense, one arrest of illegal alien for immigration violation. Our significant events, on August 21st, 2017, deputies responded to the citizen's complaint of a subject riding an ATV through the backyard of an area residence on Blackwell, or Blackstone Drive in Sims. A deputy suspected Lonny Oldham was wanted for several felonies that who lived nearby. Lonny Oldham Jr. was apprehended by deputies at the residence, at his residence, with the subject ATV, which was also reported as stolen. Investigators were able to charge Lonny Oldham with several burglaries and thefts. August 23rd, 2017, Mobile County Sheriff's K-9 Unit, along with members of the U.S. Marshals Task Force, apprehended Neil Robertson on Shelton Beach Road in 8 Mile. He was identified as a shooter or an adult victim earlier this date on House Prairie Road in Sims. Neil Robertson was arrested after he was treated and released from the hospital for canine bite wounds. He was charged with assault first degree and other drug-related charges. On August 30th, 2017, Cory Breed was arrested in charge of several counts of burglary and theft, which were committed throughout the Sims area. Any questions, interns?
Been a busy period. Busy period.
We'll have even a better report.
Okay.
Good job.
Questions, Mr. Webb?
Well, I had a report of, from people occupying the abandoned trailer park right here on Shillinger.
Right next door to Walmart over here, I mean, behind Walmart.
Mm-hmm. There was gunshots, four gunshot sounds about three nights ago.
Okay. We'll take a look into that, sir.
Okay.
But I think that's going to be some overflow from the Sahara Club. Anything else?
There's an old house back there that's falling down. It's got mattresses in there and, anyway, needs close patrol, is what I would recommend.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Platt, any questions?
No, sir.
Very good work, thank you. Mr. Lawson, you have it?
Oh, Mr. Platt.
Good. Okay, thank you. Next is the September fire report. Chief Brooks.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Fire. Yes. For the month of September, our breakdown for our major incident types for 9/1 of 2017 to 9/30 of 2017. Rescue and emergency calls, 7, 4.22 percent. False alarm and false calls, 4.30 percent. Service calls, 6.25 percent. Good intent calls, 9.77 percent. Hazardous condition, no fire, 1.95 percent. And 3.52 percent were fires. Broken down into major incident types, fires, we had nine. Rescue and emergency medical service, we had 189. Hazardous condition, no fire, five. Service calls, we had 16. Good intent, 25. False alarm and false calls, 11. For a total of 255. Just to clarify, fires, that could be anything from grass, woods, dumpster structure fires, rescuing emergency medical service calls, anything from chest pain, diabetic emergencies, cardiac arrest, motor vehicle accidents with a trap. Hazardous condition, no fire, that's just going to be calls. Example would be electrical equipment shorted out, ballast in the light, and we get there, there's no fire. Service calls, that could be anything from assistant emulating back end, that's falling into the floor, helping back into bed, child locked in the vehicle, and assist Mobile County SOs, a variety of things. Good intent calls? Those are calls that we get dispatch when council en route. Somebody smells smoke and we get there and it's just somebody burning trash. And then our false alarm calls are, could be anything from just somebody just wanting to see a fire truck going down the road, calling in a false call or an unintentional activation of an alarm. Training hours, total hours for company drill training, that's our, that's where we get together at the training center, all three of our stations and do company drills, 75 hours. Continuing education, once somebody gets in a position, we have to do continuing education. 17 hours for the month. Driver operator training, 209. Fire and life safety education classes, four hours, little over four hours. Firefighter health and wellness, 70 hours. Officer continuing education, when somebody becomes a lieutenant or captain's or a chief officer, they have to have continuing education. 15 hours for the month, and our pre-incident walkthroughs, which are our pre-fire plans for our businesses, that we have to do annually, 49 hours, for a total of 430, little over 439 hours for the month. Our occupancies, I'll just, y'all can just look at them, our fire inspector inspected 25 businesses this month. And we'll just go through and look at those. When our fire inspector goes out, he's looking for any kind of discrepancies in exits, lighting, fire extinguishers being up to date, any kind of flammable materials. If he finds any violations, he will recommend to the business owner that, you know, those things need to be corrected, and then we'll follow them. Average turnout time dispatching route, we're averaging about a minute. This month, we're averaging 54 seconds for all three stations, so we're holding steady at that. Average response time dispatch to arrival on scene for all three stations for EMS and fire calls, six minutes and 56 seconds. So we kind of set a point at seven minutes and we're holding steady right around seven minutes. Training for the month, we're very busy. Four firefighters received their certification in aerial operator, which they will be able to operate the ladder truck. Also, five officers and two senior drivers received certification as a live fire instructor. Both these classes were 40-hour classes approved by the fire college. And they will now be able to, you know, set a fire to do training in our burn building and also in a residence if, you know, we get a residence that's donated, like we have a couple months ago. There was an individual that donated a house to us, and we have to go through the NFPA standards of making sure that we've got the shingles off, we've got the carpet out, so it won't hurt the environment, and then we can do our training in a wild burn. Also, four personnel from Public Works and the Fire Department attended a FEMA class. It was an all hazards planning EOC class, where we actually did situational awareness, resource management, and had some good interaction of how to set up an EOC and plan for a major Also, we have been working on our pre-fire plans for our 300 businesses. We've completed that. Also, annual hose testing for all of our attack and supply hoses in our apartment, which is 10,000 feet of hose. We're starting that this week, and we, basically what we do is we hook all that hose up to a tester, which is kind of like a compressor. We pressurize that for five minutes to the manufacturer recommendation and see if there's any leaks or if that hose jacket bursts, and then we'll take it out of service and replace. Annual maintenance will begin next month on all the fire hydrants in our district. We have 925 fire hydrants. So every year, we have to clean out from around them, we have to hold the caps, we have to flush the hydrant and get a static pressure on them. Every five, every five years, we do a flow test to find the GPMs that's coming out of that hydrant. That will be coming up in a couple of years. And also, Fire Prevention Month has kicked off. It's National Fire Prevention Month, that's where we go out to our schools and do our fire prevention and safety programs to the kids, and we reach probably around 1,500 to 2,000 kids by our fires, safety and prevention program. So, you know, you ask yourself, why do we do all this stuff? Why don't we do the hose testing? Why don't we do the hydrant maintenance? Well, it's, you know, a lot of it is, you know, the training, all that. A lot of that's just to be proficient in our job, keeping all our trucks and our equipment up to date, but it's also for ISO. You know, when ISO comes in to evaluate, first thing they're going to do is say, where's your hose testing records? Where's your pump testing records? Where's your aerial testing records? You know, where's your business inspector? So, all this is required by ISO, plus it helps our department be proficient in their equipment. Any questions?
Very good. Mr. Smith, questions?
Please convey to all the firm, our thanks for the good job they've done. We appreciate it.
Mr. Lawson.
You're right on.
Mr. Webb?
No question, thank you.
Mr. Platt?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lawson?
Please.
Thank you, Chief.
Sure.
Stay in touch.
All right. Next item is item number five, financial report, review of checks for signature. I believe the checks are making their way around the council. I'd like everybody to look at them. Of course, we will not vote until the regular session, but if you have any questions about the checks, this would be a good time to bring them up.
Go ahead.
And then who's not looked at the checks?
This check, the John Walton store. What is it for?
What's the number?
9105.
This is for the work at, let's see, Walton Works on...
That's the resurfacing project.
Resurfacing. That would have been the most recent resurfacing job.
Researcher, not new researcher.
Well, it included the road, Red Creek Drive too.
And that went out for bids.
Your what?
That was a order by bid.
Okay. I need to talk to someone about the side of the road is...
I can talk to you there offline, if you'd like to.
Jason, what was the mileage? How many, how many feet, you know?
About two miles.
Any other questions regarding checks, anyone? Mr. Webb, did you have any other questions?
No, we'll handle it later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Platt.
One question, why the sudden increase to, I guess, communication to Hurricane Lake Falls? Did we buy something or the repairs or?
That's going to be new, Mr. Platt. We're putting in base radios.
Oh, that's right.
At all the stations, because the only communication we have is with our handhelds. A lot of times, we don't get receptions in those metal buildings and those metal roofs, and so that's what we're doing.
Okay. Hold on. Any other questions, Mr. Platt?
No, sir.
Mr. Lawson, do you have any questions about the checks?
No.
Mr. Smith?
No question.
Very good, we'll move on then. Next item is the first proposed ordinance. This was on the agenda two weeks ago. We're just in the discussion phase now. This is the nuisance ordinance. By now, you've all had a chance to read this, and essentially, this ordinance, to paraphrase it, it is a, it's basically focused on doing two or three things. One, property values, that's, that's a very important factor in a community, in a city, property values. And if you live in a neighborhood and you've spent a certain amount of money on your home, you take care of your yard, you do the things, the right things to keep your property value up, it hurts the entire neighborhood when other people do not. And what this ordinance is intended to do is keep everyone on the same playing field, keep things neat, clean, orderly, and not damage the property values of people who are trying to go about their daily lives and doing the right thing. It addresses, well, it's a wide variety of things that it addresses, but trash, junk vehicles, grass that's not cut, pretty much anything you could think of that would fall into the category of unsightly. And essentially, that's what this, that's the overview of this, of this ordinance. So, yes, sir, we're now open to questions. Yes, sir.
Are we going to enforce Section 13-11, sweeping litter into the street, the lawn mower that go along there and throw the pine straw in the ground and all out in the street? How are we going to enforce that, not being done?
Well, you mean when people are cutting, cutting the grass on the right of way? That kind of thing? Well, I think, I think basically, the intent of the ordinance is more for those individuals who would dump all of their grass cuttings onto the road. Not necessarily if you're cutting the edge of your driveway and a few pieces of grass float onto the ground, that's really not particularly what we're concerned about.
That's not the wording, that's not the wording that you have then.
But, and also, rightways should be cut by us, for those, City Sims should be cutting right away.
If I don't cut my right of way, it doesn't get cut.
Well, I guess we missed you.
We'll have to talk.
They cut my neighbor and then we cut mine. But this, this, this is not what, what you're saying is not what's in here.
Okay.
It said it should be a violation of this ordinance to blow, sweep, push litter, junk or trash, including yard clippings.
Yeah.
Leaves, grass onto city streets.
Right.
Stormwater drains, ditches or waterways. Well, what does it say? It's okay to do it then, huh?
No.
Very good.
What did you say?
Well, for example, let's say you have a mound of trash in your driveway, okay? At the end of your driveway.
That's not what I'm talking about.
Well, then, you want to take a crack at it, would you say, Matt?
Well, could I back up and give a little bit of overview?
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Over a period of years, many citizens have come into this very chamber, or have called us at church, or at the Hickory Pet, or on the street, and, I mean, individually, or as well as in the council here, and addressed a number of problems to us. And this tries to answer or perform a service that the citizens have asked us to perform. First of all, it sets up a standard that we're calling all the citizens to agree to, and the great majority of people, once they know what the standard is, they're very happy to go with that. So, I believe what you're getting to is, what about the one or two people who are just...
Or half a dozen or so.
Right. Okay, well, then you have to go back to the back section to get into the enforcement steps, what can be taken. And one of the features of this is, first of all, instead of the heavy hand of government coming down on somebody, it's to see what the root caused the problem. Some people, just for whatever reason, are not able to take their property. And the first thing is, if it's somebody that really needs help, we'll try to see if we can get them some help. If they are belligerent about it, then we have to use this, go to the court proceedings.
What's the big difference in them going one way and throwing the grass out of the way and going back the other way and throwing the grass to what they are? That's the problem.
Well, just, just considering, when the city starts telling people on their private property what they can do. I mean, I don't, I don't know.
What does this do with the street is not private property, that's...
Right, but I mean, telling them, well, you've not trimmed around your steps, so...
I'm not talking about that.
We're not talking about that. No, we're talking about stuff that gets swept into the street. Oh, okay.
You've seen a lawn mower where somebody went along there, cutting the grass and throwing the grass and pine straw and all that in the street.
Yes.
Mr. President, if I, additional remarks? Um, this, this ordinance is a little unusual in that it doesn't start with a page of legalese, it starts with a page of now shall nots. And one of those things, it's a direct address to a number of people who've come before this council is, do not burn anything on the public right of way, and do not attempt to burn anything in ditches or other low and damp areas. People have come in here and said they're, it was causing them health problems, and what can we do about it? Well, when people burn things in ditches and low damp places, it goes on all day and all night, and it causes real distress to a lot of people, so this says, don't do it. And wherein it's on the right of way, this is a step, you know, that the city owns the right of way, and it's our responsibility to take charge of that right of way. And so we can and need to say, don't do it. Don't put your trash out on the right of way. Don't burn it there. Don't mess up the front, the face of our city, basically. So, it's pretty straightforward, it says, don't do it.
But what if I go along there with my lawn mower and make it go back up in his yard? That's where it belongs.
Mr. President, if I may, I'd like to encourage all the council members to vote for this. I've had some dealings with this. Well, we're going to enforce it. In fact, out of the nine property owners that I've seen in the last couple of weeks, eight of them have been cleaning, scrubbing, and painting, and one of them wanted to get in my face, he won't know what ordinance he's breaking, and I told him I'd bring him the number Tuesday. So please consider, let's start somewhere, and we can tweak it as we go along. Because I want to hand deliver this to the business owner.
Mr. Lawson.
I've been recently...
Mr. Watts, any comments? Mr. Smith, any comments?
One other thing I'd like to call your attention to. Frequently, on nuisance ordinances, the city gets in a three-quarter thing between the owner of the property and the person that's renting the property. This ordinance attempts to firmly put the responsibility on the owner of the property and keep us from getting in the crossfire. It's just the owner's property that you get it done by the way, renting it or occupying. So, we try to be consistent throughout and put the responsibility, abating nuisances, on the owners of property.
Okay. Any other comments? The next two, items B and C, are annexation, annexation issues, two properties, ordinance annexed certain properties in the corporate limits of the city of Sims, Atkins and McMullin Soap. And to explain these to us is Mr. Tyler Hayoski.
How do I do it today?
All right. Dazzle us, would you, now?
Well, not too much today, and in the past, we've done a lot of annexations at once. We've pretty much gotten all the ones that are contiguous, that have all the appropriate picklework filled out. The last two, right, is 4250 Camiota Circle East, which is in Camiota Place, located on the north side of Motha, near McCrory intersection. The other one is just north in the same neighborhood at 8720 Zedding Court, that's contiguous as well. It's called the Brandy, and I've counseled about it. All the appropriate picklework is filled out, and everything's good to go for these two. And so, that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Watt, any questions?
Right.
Mr. Smith?
Looks like everything is in order.
Mr. Webb, any questions?
None.
Mr. Platt?
No, sir.
Mr. Lawson, any questions?
No.
Okay. All right. Is that, let's see, any questions about the McMullins?
No.
Anything good?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we're good, thank you. Next item is item 7C. I'm sorry, item 7A, authorizing a mayor to enter into agreement with Watermark Design Group. As you may recall, this involves the, I guess we'd call it the Emergency Operations Center building?
Safe room.
Safe room, EOC. Initially, the location of the EOC was going to be on Lot Road, way out on Lot Road. It would have been small, it would have been a smaller operation. And based on the number of employees that the city has, you're allowed to increase the square footage. So basically, what we did is we went back to the drawing board on this to revise the document. And, let's see, Mr. Jason, you're here? So you feel like coming up there, taking a few questions? All right. Jason said, did quite a bit of work on this, but this is a good opportunity to discuss this and... this and answer questions. So do you wanna give us an overview on the new...
Pretty much, that's what it was. We had, uh, two years ago, we, we got approved for a grant through FEMA to build a, a safe room for our first responders. And, uh, so we, we went through the process of, uh, applying for it, we got the grant and, uh, started doing the side of work. With the, with the, the new bypass coming through there and one of the other reasons is that we didn't really have any facilities out there. We thought it'd be a better idea to bring it back towards town. Uh, most of our first responders are right there at the training facility, so we thought it'd be a good idea to move it there. Um, we talked to the, uh, state EMA and they said it was okay to reapply. Um, and said, actually also said there's more funding available, but if we wanted to increase the size of it based on our, uh, number of employees, that we'd be able to do that. So there's more funding available. So what this, what this agreement is, is, um, basically allows the mayor to, to, uh, go into agreement with Watermark to redesign the building, to make it bigger and to resubmit the package to FEMA for approval. So that's what we're paying, that's what the agreement's about, to pay them to do this. This is just a, a really basic sketch of, of where they're wanting to put this. And as you'll see, here's the, uh, training facility, here's Forest Street, Illinois Street, um, here's our training facility, existing building. And we wanna put the building back on its corner over here so it would have, uh, it already have a parking area. People from this building and people from public works would already have, uh, a straight line of, you know, walk over there so we could get over there really quickly if we needed to. Um, all the first responders could fit in the building. It would go from a twelve-hundred square foot building to a two-thousand square foot building, um, and still have all the capabilities of the other design.
And allows us additional office space?
Yes.
For, for city personnel in addition to the first responders?
Right.
Which I think is important.
Very good. I think we're, we're hoping to, uh, with the expansion, it would allow us to, uh, have a, our own emergency operations center inside of that room rather than being just a block building with, you know, with place to hide us.
And it puts it in the middle of, of our operation.
Yes.
And they're able to draw a fine diesel to FEMA source and all the personnel. Very good.
Any questions?
Mr. Webb, any question?
Haven't had it, yep, don't know yet until the new plans are gone, what the cost is gonna be.
Yeah, it's good, they, the first amount was around, um, two-hundred thousand dollars, two-hundred fifty thousand dollars for the entire project. But, um, with the increase that they're gonna, uh, probably we're gonna push it back to about four-hundred thousand. Our portion of that is twenty percent, so it wouldn't be, it's eighty-twenty grants, so we wouldn't have to pay a whole amount.
It gives us basically a larger facility in the right place?
For sure.
At the right time and someplace where we can use it. So I think it's a good movement.
The expansion on the front of the existing, uh, senior center.
Yeah, where it says future expansion?
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this here was just something Chief Brooks and I talked about. At first we thought about putting the, uh, the safe room right here so it'd be directly, you know, you could get there directly there. But that, when we built this building, we left the, um, we, we left the back walls where we could expand, so if he ever needed more room for the fire department or for training facility, he could just go out that way. And so we didn't wanna block him in with this, with this blockhouse. So, uh, if we put, if we put this building right here, it would limit his capabilities of being able to expand in the future.
But you're not gonna add on to that?
Not right now.
With this?
No, that's just future planning. This is something that Chief and I just talked about. We didn't wanna block ourselves in for, who knows, ten years from now, we might wanna add on to it.
Here.
Not too bad.
Anything else, Mr. Webb? Mr. Platt?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Lawson?
Nope.
Mr. Watson?
Fine.
Mr. Smith, any questions? Okay. Thank you, Jason. All right, moving on. Uh, next resolution discussion is authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with Great Southern Recreation LLC. And this is basically for the equipment that would go in the park. I'll let you look at that, take a minute to read that. Jason may ask you these times, so, um, you can see the agreement, you see all the paperwork that goes with it. About ten pages of legalese, so, but it's all important.
I'll just talk a little bit about it.
Yes, sir, if you would, that'd be great.
The genesis of this is back to, a couple of years ago, we, we requested a grant through the Land Order Conservation Fund. And, uh, we did, we got the grant and it's a, uh, it's a fifty-fifty match. The total amount is two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars, so basically we put up, up to a hundred-and-thirty thousand, they were matches. And, uh, this was, got earmarked for the municipal park area on the splash pad and the disc golf course. And, uh, one of the big items we wanted to do was have another thing for the kids to do when they get a splash pad. And right now, all they have is a splash pad, so, uh, we wanna put a playground out there adjacent to it so, uh, you know, some kid had some other things to do. Uh, we've talked to several vendors, uh, we've, we've met with the Parks and Rec Committee, we've talked about this for months and months and we finally, uh, were able to hone down on the, on the, the correct piece of equipment. We think it would be the best benefit for the most amount of people, um, it's handicap capable, um, it's all the latest and greatest, uh, textures to where it's safe. And, uh, we did a lot of research on this and a lot went into it through the Parks and Rec Committee. We got them to approve it there, made, basically make the recommendation that we, that we purchased this apartment.
Very good. Mr. Webb, any questions?
No, thank you.
Mr. Platt?
Uh, I will say that this was, uh, one of the projects that Mr. Shirey was very excited about. I think he really liked that playground equipment catalog. He was really excited about this. And we're finally getting it off the table.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Lawson, any comments?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Very good.
Okay. Thank you, Jason, I appreciate that. All right. Did you have any questions on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Very good. The next item is authorizing agreement between the City of Sims and the Sims Senior Center. Again, like last year, this was in the, the format of a performance contract, which was approved by our council and I believe it stands the legal test. And of course, as you know, to use city funds for, for operations such as the senior center, we have to make sure we go through all the legal hurdles, which I believe in this case we've done. So if you wanna take a minute to read that resolution between the City of Sims and the Sims Senior Center, please feel free to read that and we'll discuss it, take, take questions Uh, Mr. Webb, any questions on this?
I can tell them about this Thursday when I'm up there.
Yes, sir.
Late till...
Yes, sir. Yeah, if it passes, yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Platt, did you have any questions?
No, sir.
Mr. Lawson?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Uh, I'd like to point out that, uh, there's a major expansion going on at Senior Center. This is, of course, one of the, uh, points of pride, the Senior Center, uh, points of pride of our Sims community. And, uh, in terms of their amount of service they perform, this is a relatively small amount. This is, uh, what they came before the finance committee and, and they have made their submissions and answered our questions and, uh, so the finance committee supported it and it has been budgeted. So this is the budget, and this is the actual follow-through of, of contracting with them to perform the budgets.
Yes, yes. Very good, I appreciate that. And I, I agree with those comments and we also appreciate the, the idea that the Senior Center provided us the data early in a timely manner so that we can do our due diligence on it. So, thank you, that's the way, that way, that's the way it works best. So, very good. Are there any other questions on the Senior Center? No? Okay, moving on. This is item D, authorizing agreement between the City of Sims and Sims Heritage Park. All right. Uh, again, this documentation was a budgeted item and it was, the data for it was submitted and ran through the legal gauntlet and what you see before you is that document. All right. Uh, Mr. Webb, any questions on this?
No.
Mr. Platt?
No, sir.
Mr. Lawson, any questions? Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I see the Sims Heritage Park, uh, actually puts Sims, City of Sims on the map. It, uh, is the, uh, major feature of this area in terms of the bicentennial, the LM bicentennial. So, uh, we really want to have a heritage park all swept up, well painted and shining for the extra visitors who else to handle in Sims area for the bicentennial.
Very good. Any other questions, any other comments? Again, thank you Heritage Park for getting the data in early so that we could, to do this correctly, to give it the consideration and deserve. All right, that's item D. Moving on to item E, which is the last resolution. Authorizing agreement between the City of Sims and Sims Women's Club Incorporated for the twenty-seventeen Sims Christmas Tour. Okay? You should have that resolution in your package discussion. Uh, this is, of course, this is a yearly event. And we will take questions, okay? Anyone have any questions? Mr. Webb, any questions? Mr. Platt? Any question?
Only question I've got is how can they do it for so little?
Just good prudent management, right?
I don't know.
Mr. Lawson?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Uh, this allows the City of Sims to participate in this annual event, which is one of the pride, uh, events of the city, so I'm happy to, for two thousand dollars that we can participate.
Good deal.
Yep.
Very good. Okay, any other discussion regarding this? All right, very good. Um, moving on. Committee reports, financial planning. Mr. Smith?
Financial planning?
Financial report, financial committee.
Oh, financial report.
Whatever you wish to say.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Uh, looking at this resolution about the speed limit, so I just...
Yeah, that's, uh, the speed limit is, is under, uh, staff comment, legal counsel, council comments under nine A. And I think, Mr. Platt, you're gonna leave that in discussion, aren't you?
Yeah.
Okay, that's coming up, yeah.
Hey, uh, we can give a flash report of the, uh, end of year finances, uh, it'll take a few days to actually bring it all together, lining up the books for you, it's not that simple. But, um, in, in brief, the flash report is good. Uh, mayor, uh, went out to meet with a, a utility company and came back with a check for, somebody that came back, they promptly forwarded in a check for ninety-seven thousand dollars and that really did, uh, offset us over the top of our income.
Nice meeting you.
Basically, we had a good year.
Can you go a month a week?
We're gonna work on that. Uh, it was a good trip. So, uh, any case, uh, hope next session that we'll be able to give a really, uh, complete detailed comment report, but it's, it's good. Finances are good.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Lawson, roadways and right of ways, public works.
We, uh, thank you, we got two more. Two more of vital, city of pride. Jason?
Uh, met with Alda today, Jason and I, uh, as far as phase two of the street lighting. Uh, we should be having eighteen or nineteen additional locations come up. Um, once we get the, uh, contracts, we'll send that to council and, uh, if all is good, we'll send those through, get those signed and, uh, they'll be put on order. And from there, it'll be six to eight weeks before installation.
Good. Very good. Very good.
They got the road fixed, like bank, the post office is fixed.
Yeah, on Illinois Street, yeah, yeah. The small patch is now a, now quite a large patch. It looks much better and there's not as much of a speed limit there.
A lot smoother.
Hmm? A lot smoother. Are they gonna, they're gonna come back at some point and do the whole road, right? Yeah, yeah.
It might be next year on the next resurfacing project.
Yeah, initially, eventually the entire road, all of Illinois will be repaid and that will be repaid. But for now, what's important is that the businesses, the post office, the bank, BWI, everybody can drive on the nurseries, they won't interfere with their business operations, but that's important. Anything else, sir?
Okay.
All right. Mr. Platt, public safety?
Uh, well, I think everyone knows that we, uh, authorized, uh, an increase in the number of deputies and, uh, I hope everyone's aware of how positive, uh, things are looking as far as, as our law enforcement efforts. So, it really, really looks good. Uh, on the fire and rescue side, um, I'm just asking again, everyone keep in mind that, uh, this is one of those situations where you're, you're never done. We have ongoing maintenance issues and, uh, we have some, uh, expansion needs in the future. And, um, since things have been so terribly, um, busy lately, Chief Brooks has kinda just going with the flow and giving us a little time on all of these things. Additionally, um, I met with, uh, the sheriff and, uh, he convinced me that my recommendation that, uh, one of the three be a investigator, he's, uh, he's saying that we all just go ahead and, uh, have that third as a patrol because he's gonna give us, uh, entire sheriff's office as far as investigators and crime scene and et cetera, et cetera. So, I'm just gonna have to take his advice. Brandy, maybe we should, uh, see about retracting the counselor, I don't know if you, you know, the requirement, one of the new deputies be an investigator. I guess we can retract that, yes, so...
Is that in the contract?
I, I don't know.
We don't have the contract yet.
No, we're still kind of in the, the meat of that. But, uh, the idea though is that you're saying three patrolmen?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Sheriff, uh, he, he said that we're gonna get the rest of it anyway.
Okay, well, good. And that puts more cars on the street.
Right.
And that's what we want.
And additionally, I haven't had a chance to talk with the mayor... And additionally, I haven't had a chance to talk with the mayor about this, but, um, we are moving forward rapidly and aggressively with our emergency preparedness and, um, I'm gonna be talking with the mayor about possibly a change in, uh, some personnel assignments because we've got a lot going on as far as, uh, emergency management, but, like I said, I haven't had a chance to talk with the mayor about that and that's pretty much it as far as public safety.
All right, thank you, sir. And, Mr. Platt, Parks and Rec, you're up again.
Oh, Parks and Rec.
You're a popular fellow there.
Yeah, what's going on with Parks and Rec? I think that, uh, oh, there's only one thing about Parks and Rec that I'm glad I didn't forget. When you think of Parks and Rec, I think that it's, um, it's only a small part of the overall relationship that the city has with our citizens. And, um, I'm all, trying to talk with all of the council members, I've already talked with quite a few citizens, but I'd like to see us really tighten up our relationship with all of the organizations, uh, coming into the city. I know that we have Alliance Club coming here, we've got, uh, Chamber of Commerce and, uh, we need to start paying more attention to these, um, these organizations, they do a lot for us. And, um, I'll have to single out Ms. Daly, I think that she's our outreach coordinator and we ought to, uh, get her involved in all this, pay her dues, whatever it takes, let's get her going to these meetings and bringing information to and from. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, before we get into your discussion, uh, Mr. Platt on the, the speed limit, are there any other council, legal council or staff comments?
All right.
Mr. Platt, you're gonna discuss, uh, proposed resolution requesting Aldott fix Highway 98 speed limit at a consistent 45 miles per hour throughout our...
Well, yes, sir. Again, I think that, uh, may have made an error on that, um, I actually, I was requesting lower limit and everybody says 45, but I failed to consider the fact that we do have a, have a sign that says 35, just as you hit the stoplight at Sims, I think, Don?
Yeah, yeah, I can come up and...
Oh, good, please.
Don from Aldott?
We appreciate you being here. Speed limits are near and dear to everybody's heart and it's always good to take a minute to talk about them. It affects all of us.
That was horrible.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so what I just handed y'all are three different sheets. The top one is the current speed limit signs throughout the city as well as, let's correct it. Top one should be existing conditions within construction zones, is that what it says there? They stacked them differently on all of them. Okay. So, I think that's where the 35 speed limits come into play, is those are the construction zone speed limits. So, that's how it currently sits today. I think we should really be talking about this without the construction zones because ultimately the construction's gonna go away.
Yeah.
So, if you go to the sheet that's existing conditions without the construction zone signage, that's where we would be, say, before Schillinger or after, or before the McCray Road project came into being. And you can see, I was kinda surprised, I didn't realize the speed limits were all over the place, the way they are, 50, 45, 55. Again, they, they kinda are all over the place. So what we've done is, we actually went out and did some speed studies before the work at McCray started that showed, you know, anywhere from 50 to 55 throughout the corridor is about the right speed. But, that said, speed studies are based strictly on speed. You know, a lot of times the engineering judgment, the, the accesses, all the left-turning movements, the accidents, the speed study doesn't take that into account. So we went back out there over the last couple of weeks and since I came out and met with Mr. Platt and some others, and we did some other speed studies and, and we tried to take a little more of that engineering judgment into play. And so what we, what we've done with that is, if you go to the third sheet, we are talking about, this is our proposed speeds and basically what is, what it does is it sets a constant speed limit of 50, with the exception of as you approach this area, the Schillinger Road area, and it's from Los Rancheros to about the Crawford United Methodist Church, we dropped it down to 40 miles and now we're there. Now, we did not study the McCray Road area, of course it's under construction, it's, it's, I can't, can't do a good speed study there now. I can do a speed study when it's completed. Um, right now, our estimate for that project is early to mid-November, the, some of the hurricanes kinda delayed us again with all of the traffic coming through, we stopped working all of our 98 projects, so, you know, we, we continued, that has slipped back a little bit. So, I guess, I guess where I am is I'm coming, this is what we're looking at right now, this was what I wanted to present to y'all as, as our option for the speeds through Sims and, and ask you to wait before you pass anything to let us look at McCray Road, maybe I can come back out here and come to this work session or I can come out and meet with you individually and, and we can talk about the speeds again.
Don, actually, that's why, you know, I'm, I'm glad you was able to come because, uh, I'd rather you handle it locally, you know?
Well, and, and we want a good relationship, that's what I'm here, I'm here to talk and answer questions.
When I, when I hear speed studies, I, it just really upsets me because I'm looking at the number of wrecks, the number of people that get killed, our response, fire department seems to, they, they, they need a 24-hour vehicle right there on, on Mopet. What's the significance of this yellow 40?
That's just showing that the speed's gonna reduce, it's the reduced speed at its side.
Okay, okay.
It, it would warn the traveling public going in either direction that it would, that the speed limit's dropping.
Well, it's not, uh, my decision, the council, but, uh, you know, you're 50, just before you get to Schillinger's Road, that's our biggest, uh, most congested intersection.
Well, now that, we, I mean, again...
Right now, that's 35.
Well, but again, it's a construction zone, that's what's dropping.
The sign that says 35 is a permanent sign and it's setting within 100 feet of the red light. It should, like you say, it's 50, 50, 50, and I think it's really nice that y'all let them build up that speed coming down the hill so you give them 55 there.
See, but it's, it's, it's mounted, but it, it should be a construction sign.
What will it go to?
It's, it's mounted for the construction work.
What will it go to?
It'll, well, once our construction's done, it'll go back up to what it is now, which is 50, 50. But we're proposing that we, we would drop it to 40.
Okay, but, when you, when you say construction's done, do you mean all the way down to 158?
Yes.
That's what you mean?
When, when the current project, well, yes, when the, the, because right now we're working on the project, it goes from 98 to long.
Right.
So when that, when that project is done and we're probably 18 months to two years from having that project complete, that's when it would go back to the normal speed limit.
So it's gonna stay there for a while?
It'll be there for a while.
Okay.
Well, uh, so you're saying wait another year or two?
No, I'm saying we could handle all of this, but I'm saying the construction signs will stay in place.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Until we're done with that project. But, we can have this resolved such that when the construction signs come down, it doesn't go to 50, it would go to 40.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, when they get to interchange, uh, Bill, when is that supposed to be completed? That project out there?
Which one?
The one out, uh, where Glen Farms Road is?
Glenwood?
It's gonna send a lot of those big trucks...
Oh, he means the 158.
The 158 and 98?
Right.
Where...
Does that stop too, right now, or not?
No, we're, we're working on...
You're still working on it?
Yeah, we, the bridge extension has gotten started, that project's under construction.
Yeah.
The first of the, the Stero 158 extension projects is scheduled to let in November.
Okay.
And then there'll be several more projects, the two lanes open to the Mississippi line, but we're probably looking at 21 or 22 before I get those two lanes open, so we're set, still several years away.
Okay, well, I didn't know because it's gonna, you know, move down large traffic away and I guess they'll look back again and see, evaluate this again.
Sure, sure, yeah. We're, and, and once I get those two lanes out there, that, all the trucks and all the through traffic, all the people that are just coming through to get to the beach...
Right, right.
That, that, they'll come off of 98 and it'll help with the traffic problems.
Yeah, okay.
Question?
Yes.
So, let me, do I understand you could evacuate this plan right away on your own motion?
No, we'd still need, we'd still need the city to do a, an ordinance to, to work with us. But, but again, what I'm asking is, is let's wait and let's get McCray Road done so we can do it all at one time and we're not going back and tearing it down.
How long will that be done?
There's some, there, the, I checked with them today and they're saying early to mid-November. Um, he told me they should be finished paving this week, early next week, shift some traffic around and start working the middle for the turn lines.
All right, so, uh, basically if you're headed east on 98, the speed limit is gonna be 50 until you get to Oak Tree and then it's gonna be 40?
That's right.
Well, firstly, I, I don't like that, but I think that the, the entire council needs to look at it, uh, you're coming by double branch at 50 and, and, uh, that's the legal speed limit. Um, but, uh, I don't, I don't have a problem. Mr. President, how do you think we should do this table, is there, just, uh, that Don do the same?
Well, we're talking into November.
We're hoping, I'm hoping a couple of months and I can come back here and we can do this again.
Yeah.
And, and I'll have the rest of these signs filled in and, and, you know, again, some of the concerns I, I expressed earlier when we met is, you know, we drop it too low, then it becomes an enforcement issue, it's gonna be an enforcement regardless, and then does it become a speed trap? And I understand it's safety and, and a speed trap and it's this fine line that you really have to balance.
Well, we're not, we don't do speed traps, but, I mean...
There's no such thing as a speed trap.
They don't do speed traps because...
I, I heard, yeah.
Yeah, but, I think, I think dropping the 40 both ways is a, is a good move, it would cut down on...
And it's very possible we could end up with that in and around the McCray Road area.
Yeah.
My thoughts, my thoughts pre-doing that is, the work we're doing out there is going to, you know, is gonna improve the efficiency and the safety such that it's probably gonna be 50 there as well, but let that finish and let us think about it.
Mr. President, I'm, I can live with that, I just, I'm, I'm just tickled to death that Aldott and Don is here getting involved as long as we get something done. Um, personally, I, I think it's a little too high to the east, but that will be for the council to decide.
Well, as I said, we're, right now it's just, just the discussion item anyway.
Right here.
But, I think what we're, our main concern is that, the accident, and we wanna slow things down as people come into the, the business zone and the commercial zone and, uh, it's just a lot of traffic.
And they're making those left turns.
Yeah, well, I saw the traffic study and I know you, you live by traffic studies, but the traffic on 98 at the present time is equal to...
65.
65.
The average divided by 65.
65 on the average day, that's amazing. When you think about it, it's the same as interstate, right out here, right? Okay.
Just do what you can.
We will, and, and we'll, we'll come back and, and we'll even say, as McCray finishes up, we'll get out there and...
But you're taking off the gloves on the construction project right now, I mean, they could, they're free to work, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Then we, we stopped them for...
All right, you proceed stopping them again unless something terrible happens, I mean...
No, no, you know, and, and that was the problem, we stopped them, it was a beautiful week here.
Good.
We had no rain, it was great weather, and then we, we turned them loose and it, I think it rained the whole next...
Right.
All right, I want to thank you very much for what you did, I believe you really got that, uh, these back-to-back lights coordinated.
Yeah, when I, when I was out and met with y'all before, I think I lied to you and told you they were already coordinated, I hadn't realized that, that there was still some components that weren't talking well, and I think the week after that, we got those swapped out and, and I understand they've been working much better.
Oh, it is better, the lines helped, the turn lines, that helped.
Yeah, that, and we got the, we got the stripe painted, that's right.
Because before you really had to guess where the line was, so, thank you.
One thing about the McCray and Mopet intersection, let's please consider 40 mile an hour in that area because I live, go and come a lot and, uh, and we've got the, uh, new entrance lanes and the...
Well, there, he's right, and there's an issue too, we have Hepha and Baytown right there on, uh, McCray, when you turn off of 98 onto McCray, and they have some serious speed issues with people roaring around that turn. And now with that right turn, then that, that's gonna be a consideration and we, I think we've talked about a warning like there before, but, you know, I don't, you know what I'm talking about?
Thanks.
Okay. Because they come up to that turn, they come out of there two subdivisions and it's, it's treacherous.
Mr. Franklin, did you need to talk with Don about the Alexis Place sign or are you handling that?
No, I have not talked to him about that. I don't think that would be in, in his, uh, that's off the beaten path, so, that's I've got, I've got a...
Okay, so probably what we'll do in, in lieu of this coming up as a regular item on the agenda, we will probably just consider waiting until the end of November.
Yeah.
And then you can give us the proposals on the reduced speed limits to include all the way from, uh, McCray all the way down.
That's right, and I'll, and I'll keep Jason in, but when I'm ready and we can come back in.
Who would that have come? Snow Road.
Snow Road?
Yeah.
But look at that too.
Sure.
President, might be good for you just to get the council together so we can give him an idea.
We'll take a look at that.
Okay.
Yeah, because as, as, as Mr. Webb says, it's, it's a, it's a problem, people are just forward through there and we understand everybody wants to get where they want to get, but, but our job is to make sure they get there safely.
Yeah, efficiently and safely.
Yes.
And that's, that's the two things we have to look at.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely, good point.
Some of the kids from Mary's, you might come through Eastbound about 8:00 on that or something.
Yes.
Why so slow?
Come back.
Why so slow?
I'm just guessing, I'm going fast, I know.
Don, thank you very much. Thank you so much for coming out, we appreciate your help.
Absolutely.
Okay, is there any other business about to come before the meeting?
We're adjourned.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned, uh, for about 10 minutes and then we'll resume in the regular session.
Let's go make a...
Yep. What time is it?
4:20.
4:20. Hello, everybody, it is 4:20, the regular session of the City Council, City of Sims is now called to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Watts.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Platt.
Here.
Councilmember Lawson.
Here.
Very good. All right, we're gonna ask a special guest today to do both the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. We have Mr. Ron Mitchell of the Lions Club, he is a membership chairman and one of their senior officials, so, Mr. Mitchell, we'll let you do the invocation and play.
Mr. Chairman, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this night and we thank you for the opportunity to serve the City of Sims. We pray to bless the servants that you have here tonight and the mayor, the council, that their decisions be wise and guided and everything that they do would be in benefit to citizens of the City of Sims. We ask these things in your name.
Amen.
Mr. Platt, in so...
Blessed to fly on the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. All right. First item is the consideration of the minutes from the regular council session of September 19, 2017. You should find those in your package.
Make a motion and we accept the minutes as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, the minutes from the regular council session of September 19, 2017 are approved. Do we have any presentations or guest speakers?
Yes, sir.
All right, next item is item seven, which is the financial report, approval of the checks for signature, I believe everybody on the council has seen all the checks, is, uh, before we vote, are there any questions regarding the checks? Mr. Webb?
Come on, the, uh, I think it's 9185, is that collected for 100 and...
Yes, sir, go ahead and pull that out.
Hundred thousand. But I think I had the question.
Sure, go right ahead, sir.
Hundred fifty-five thousand three hundred and nine dollars and fifty-eight cents, but-
What's the number there, what's the number?
Ninety-one oh five.
Ninety-one oh five.
Repaving.
Repaving and-
You said something about-
A surface. Red Creek Drive North. I was curious about the, what he was supposed to have done there. As part of the, matter of fact, I didn't know it, but the, the city was doing some work over there today. And the edge of the pavement home toward my lot-
Yes.
That's washed out, the road is washed out, maybe about six or eight inches deep, or maybe eight to ten feet.
Right.
And I was wondering, what, what is gonna be done about that? Is, is grass gonna be put on the side of the road where the pavement stops, or?
Is Jason still here?
Needs to be, uh-
Those are good questions.
And the city was over there.
No, he's gone.
Well, it's, if you'd like to, we can call him back.
No, uh, just wondering what they were supposed to do for the, for the money.
Sure, sure, well, if you'd like to, we can, we can hold that check out, and why don't we get Jason on the phone, and see if we can get him back here, and then we'll put off on approving the checks until I've these answered some questions.
I was just wondering, uh-
Legitimate questions, Jason?
Something else that's got to be done, because the new pavement's probably lost away.
I understand. What we'll do is we'll get Jason back, and then we'll wait until the questions are answered before we approve the checks. Is that all right with everybody?
Okay.
Okay, very, we'll move on, and we'll come back to that, okay? He should not have gone too far. All right, that one, that ordinance did not need, I mean, the other checks, okay. The next item is not an item that needs to be considered for immediate consideration, because it was on the last agenda. This is, again, the nuisance ordinance. We talked about it earlier during the work session, are there additional questions on the nuisance ordinance?
The check, John, do you want some?
Close, anybody have any questions on the nuisance ordinance?
Mr. President, I'd like to comment that this is noteworthy, and that the city with this ordinance is stepping up to the responsibility of attending to its own responsibility, and taking care of not only many of the problems that have been brought to us by the citizens, but by supervising our own right way.
Right.
Which is the front yard, the face of our city, and many of these things are key to the right way, which is our responsibility. So we are stepping up to our responsibility to the citizens on this.
I agree.
And I move for approval.
Yeah. Is there a second? Okay, roll call vote?
Councilmember Watts?
Here.
Was that a yes or a no?
Yep.
Okay, Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Webb?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Walshy?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes. Very good, that is approved. The next two items, I will need a motion for immediate consideration, these are the two annexations.
Still move.
Is there a second? Roll call vote?
Councilmember Watts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Webb?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Walshy?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes, very good. Both items B and C are now open for immediate consideration. Should we do both, please, here?
Yes.
Okay, all right, the first item is One Property, Atkins Property. Are there questions on that, we discussed it during the work session, any questions on ordinance B?
I move we approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote?
Councilmember Watts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Webb?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Walshy?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes, all right. The next item is the Mellon Property, ordinance to annex, are there, is there any other discussion on that?
I'm pleased to recommend we approve.
There's a second, roll call vote?
Councilmember Watts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Webb?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Walshy?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes, very good, those two ordinances are approved. Ordinance A, B, and C, they are all approved. Moving on to resolutions, we will need, before we discuss these, a motion for immediate consideration for resolutions A through E. Is there such a motion?
Still move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote?
Councilmember Watts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Webb?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Walshy?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes, very good, we can now move on with resolutions A through E. The first one is authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with Watermark Design Group LLC. This is, as we discussed in the work session, a re-submital of the original document. Thompson will be managing this problem, it'll be taken through all phases of paperwork until it is appropriately completed to our satisfaction. Is there additional discussion on resolution nine A?
Move we approve.
Second.
Say a roll call vote?
Councilmember Watts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Webb?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Walshy?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes, that was approved, moving on to resolution nine B. Authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with Great Southern Recreation LLC. This is regarding the playground equipment to the park. Is there any other discussion on item resolution B, nine B?
Move we approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote?
Councilmember Watts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Webb?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Walshy?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes, that one is approved. Item resolution C, authorizing agreement between the City of Sims and the Sims Senior Center. This was discussed during the work session, is there any additional discussion or questions regarding resolution nine C?
Move we approve.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Councilmember Watts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Webb?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Walshy?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes. Next item is authorizing an agreement between the City of Sims and Sims Heritage Park. Any discussion on that?
I move we approve.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Councilmember Watts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Webb?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Walshy?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes, that's A through D, correct?
And we also need to-
Okay, D now. Very good, the last one is item E, authorizing agreement between the City of Sims and Sims Women's Club for the twenty-seventeen Sims Christmas tour. Is there any other additional questions?
Looking forward to Christmas, I move we approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote?
Councilmember Watts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Webb?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Walshy?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes, okay. All right, we'll proceed on, we're going to hold up after comments and announcements to wait for, did you catch Jason?
Yeah, he's on, he's back.
All right, well, there any other comments and announcements, comments or announcements from council? Yes, sir?
I wanted to point out on the playground equipment, that we went through great lengths to make sure that was on a purchasing co-op, which is exempt under the bid law.
Okay, a very important point, thank you.
And Randy and Jason did all that.
Thank you for pointing that out, I appreciate it. Any other comments or announcements? Okay, we're just going to, before we do public comments, we're going to just kinda hold for a minute for Jason to arrive, and then we'll see if we can answer those questions. Mr. Webb had some, some good questions regarding this project, and it's a significant project, so I think it's worth talking about. Oh, yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to remind council that I issued an invitation to each of you from the Boys and Girls Club, and they are requesting an RSVP, so if, if you wouldn't mind looking at that and giving me your RSVP at some point later this week, so I can turn it in, thank you.
When is it?
Um, I don't have it in front of me.
Oh, is this this one?
Yes, sir.
Is it twelve? And we need to respond by the fifth, oh, good, come on, Jason, you thought you were going home?
I had to go get my keys.
Oh, good.
'Cause they were gonna lock the gate.
Um, yeah, if you come up to the podium, yeah, if you would, respond to this invitation to the twenty-seventeen board installation awards launch for the Boys and Girls Club, if the council would, no later than the fifth, which is-
Wednesday, I mean Thursday.
Thursday.
If y'all could let me know tomorrow, so I'm not here.
Okay, you can let, you can let Denise to know about that.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, we basically had, Mr. Webb had some legitimate questions about one of the projects, and we wanted to make sure that we were on the same page.
Sure, yeah, no problem.
Go ahead, Mr. Webb.
Uh, well, I just was wondering about the way the paving was done on Red Creek Drive North.
Yes.
What can we do, or what should have been done to keep the, the dirt, this very little grass-
Well, you could've-
-from washing away, and that's what the last part was, uh-
Well, you could've made the road a lot wider and probably doubled the cost, but there's ways of doing that, and we can, we can go back and fix the area you're talking about. It's just a washout where the, where the road, there's a hill going back down towards Eastwood, and the water gets, wherever the water gets off the road-
Right there at my lot.
-and it's gonna go and cause a little, I call it a little erosion reel out into the ditch, so we'll just put a little check right there, and put a little asphalt fling, not a big deal at all.
Okay.
Whose responsibility is that, yours or?
We can do it, or the contractor can do it, I mean, it would take a quarter a ton of asphalt to do, maybe ten to fifteen bucks. Really, really small problem.
It's just one spot, and I didn't know that was there till I saw them over there fixing the driveway for my neighbor, and right across the ditch from my fence, it's where the washout is, and then-
Yeah, that's, that's the only one, that's the only one outside.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, can we hold that one check, approve the rest of them, go resolve?
I wouldn't recommend that.
You don't do that, okay?
Vote, did I ask a question?
Sure.
Uh, I believe, as I just said to Mr. Webb's question earlier, it was, what is the contractor's responsibility at this particular moment in regard to the issue he's talking about? What is their responsibility?
Is that their responsibility?
Yes, sir, that's their-
Well, then they, they should fix it.
Yes, sir, and, and right now, they're at the point where they've finished the main paving, we've created a punch list, we did a walkthrough with the engineer and the contractor, we generated a list, a one-page list of things that need to be addressed, and that is on the list. We can do it now, and deduct it for them if we're worried about it, it's not, we can do that, no problem at all.
I think, you know-
Another question, is that the final payment is supposed to be?
That's not the final payment.
Oh, okay.
We hold retainage for things like this.
Thank you very much.
So it's on the punch list, what he's referring to, but I think we probably would agree, Mr. Webb, that we want the contractor to do that.
Yeah, well, I had to make a motion, make a motion to approve this check-
Yes, sir.
-for the work that they have done thus far.
And we're holding back, I think, ten percent, five or ten percent of the total contract cost until all the punch list items are taken care of.
Okay, there's probably a warranty beyond-
There is.
-beyond the end of the contract anyway.
I think so.
All right, are we okay with that, Mr. Webb? With that a motion to approve all the checks?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote?
Councilmember Watts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Webb?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Walshy?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes, very good, the checks are approved for signing for this council meeting October third. Very good, I think I mentioned comments and announcements, so are there any public comments?
Yes, Ron Mitchell.
Ron Mitchell, okay, hey, Mr. Mitchell, good morning. Good to see you again.
Thank you, mayor and council, for allowing me to speak.
Yes, sir.
And what I want to speak about tonight is that I am organizing Sims Lions Club. And the Lions Club is the largest service organization in the world.